Yes, as I'll ever be.
Okay, it's 7:40 PM. We're going to call the mayor and council meeting to order. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of the mayor and council meeting of May 19th, 2014.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor for approving the minutes? Any opposed? Let the record show that it was asked unanimously. Our second order of business is payment of bills. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
There is.
Paying the bills is presented.
I know.
Is there a second?
Yeah, report on cash. You always do.
That's the second meeting. We do the cash.
Okay. All right. Yes, there's a second. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show that we unanimously agreed to pay the bills. Our third order of business is Bill Noel and Trina Williamson, resolution to approve and support the U.M. Chester River Health Foundation's community investment tax credit application and project.
Good evening. I'm Bill Noel. This is a project on the -- it's an application to the Department of Housing and Community Development of the State of Maryland. They have a program wherein institutions can apply for tax credits so that contributors to those institutions, in this case, the Chester River Health Foundation, would be able to solicit contributions. So it's a two-for-one. If you contribute $10, you can get $5 of credit. There's a minimum of $500 contribution, I believe. So, and the maximum that you can apply for is $50,000 of credits. And we've been pretty successful in recent years in getting credits. We are associated with the only hospital that is part of this program in the State of Maryland. The total fund available, total credits available are about $1.5 million. And it's pretty competitive, but we've, last year or the current year where we're soliciting contributions today, we've received a maximum of $50,000. And we've applied for $50,000 in the 2015 contribution year. So the, this department requires that the local support or support of local government. And each year that we've been involved, the Chester Town has graciously supported the program which benefits the citizens of Kent County and Chester Town. So we request your support. And there's a resolution, I believe, in front of you that if you approve it, we'd like to get your support. Any questions?
All right. Do you guys have any questions?
No.
Would you like me to read the resolution?
Let's read it into the minute.
It's pretty long.
Read it into the minute.
I'll do it if you want.
There must be a pretty good paragraph in there that just covers it pretty much. Is it the first paragraph?
Resolve that.
Bill, what paragraph would you read if you had?
I would say that if you look at the paragraph that is the third paragraph, I think that would be the one.
How about I read that? Whereas the U.M. Chester River Health Foundation is applying to the Department of Housing and Community Development of the State of Maryland for approval of the project and a $50,000 allocation of community investment tax credits to sell to business entities and individuals on the eastern shore, and that once sold will help fund the purchase of I-Round software, which collects and analyzes patient quality, safety, and satisfaction data. This technology will be used at all three member hospitals of Shore Regional Health, Shore Medical Center at Chester Town, Shore Medical Center at Easton, and Shore Medical Center at Dorchester.
I move that we approve the resolution to support the University of Maryland, Chester River Health Foundation, in their community investment tax credit application.
Is there a second?
Are you going to Easton and Cambridge also?
Yes, there's a --
Dorchester.
Those town council meetings are being held this evening, and our executive directors in Cambridge and another individual in Easton.
In that case, I second them all.
Okay, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show that we unanimously approved the resolution. And I'm going to sign it right now.
If you want, listen, I'll make a copy so that I have one for my record for next year.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Our fourth order of business this evening is Karen Emerson from the Historic Society of Kent County. Hello.
Good evening.
Karen, how are you?
I'm good. I'm well. How is everybody?
Good. We're doing well.
So we have applied for permit to have our first annual Legacy Day, which would include a parade and a block party.
And I think we, I was going through the details, and there were starting to be more questions than I could answer. So the, and I forget where I, how far I had read. Does that council remember any of their questions? Parade starts at 6:00 PM. Starts in the vicinity of Calvern and North College?
Correct.
And then it's, it'll come down to the corner of High and Court. Is that right? The parade comes to the High Street and Court Street?
That's where judging will be. It'll go to Queen Street?
Goes to Queen Street. And then, and then just, what happens then? Music in the park?
Um, music in the park. We have a band lined up for that. And in between, music in the park will actually play from 7 until 10 o'clock. They have a contract with Quickfire, I believe is the name of the band. And while they're on break, there'll be a DJ that'll provide music.
Okay. 7 to 10. And that's longer than music in the park is usually over at dark, right?
Yes, it's usually over, it's usually an hour and a half.
And do you need, do you need a stage? What kind of support do you need from the town?
Yes, we would need a stage.
And where does the stage go?
It would go at the corner of Court and High Street.
Okay.
Similar to when you have an event, parade or something along those lines.
That portable stage that we have would be all right?
Yes.
Okay. Trash cans, police support. Chief, have you had?
I have actually not spoken.
I don't think he's seen this because we just got started.
It is something on my, you know, I know that's something that has to be figured out before we, you know, the evening of the event. Things that have to happen.
And you have porta-johns? Where would you imagine the porta-johns need to be?
Probably on Court Street.
Okay.
This is the first time that we've planned an event like this. So if somebody has any ideas, please let me know what's been done, no sense reinventing the wheel.
Right.
So the health department does not have a number that we need to have for 300 people, so we figured that we'll have three. They said two to three, so we will have three.
Okay. What is the date of this event?
It is August 16th.
August 16th.
August 16th.
Is this different from the War of 1812?
Before.
Before.
This is different from, this is, it's a few weeks before, and this is a celebration of the, this year's celebration will be the Uptown Club and Charlie Graves and his contributions to the community. If this is a success, we hope to have this again in further years and have a Legacy Day, possibly not in the same spot. This is, like I said, this is the first year that we're doing this. You know, we're just trying to figure out what's going to work best and get attention and be able to attract the most number of people.
Do you, what part, what street are you going to want closed for people to dance in the street? Where were they dancing?
High Street.
High Street, what block?
The between.
Right in front of the Garfield?
Right in front of the Garfields.
Okay.
Directly in front of the Garfields.
And closed from Queen Street to Court Street, Lower Row, or from where to where?
Yes, from Queen Street to, from the vicinity of Queen Street to, well, Court Street would have to be closed off also if we have sort of bodies and.
Okay.
What day of the week is this? Is it Friday or Saturday?
It is a Saturday night.
Okay.
Has anybody checked with the Garfield that they don't have?
Yes.
An event on? Because it's right around the time they usually do the playmakers. I think it might be a bit later.
We, I have spoken with the Garfield, and the Garfield is actually our, if it's a rainy evening, that'll be our rain event site. So I have that set up already.
Well, you're right, the, a lot of this is, you don't need to reinvent the wheel. There's been several things where the, the street's been closed in front of the Garfield. And so we'll start the.
I've been working with Andy Goddard on that. She seems to be the.
Yeah, great. So I guess now we have more information for the council to make a decision.
Well, I don't want to, Sabine may not appreciate me bringing up her name, but she did a wonderful, such a wonderful job with the Tea Party for her first year. And.
Yes, it was a wonderful, we had a wonderful turnout.
I could kind of pick her brain because we're neighbors at Farmer's Market now, until the war. So if you give me a list, you know, maybe she'd be able to offer some advice.
Well, actually, if you think that she'd be a good go-to, I could go to her directly because we worked quite closely with the Tea Party. She was very kind in including the Historic Society in some sense.
Yeah, I can volunteer, but I make that suggestion.
Yeah, I know. I take all suggestions for people that I can check with to see how things have gone in the past and what works best.
Yeah.
So what can we do tonight?
You can say it's, that it's okay, and we'll, and we'll work out the details. And if you, as you get closer, if you want to come back and tell us how it ended up for, to get your 300 people, I'm sure you've probably got 300 already.
Well, there seems to be quite a lot of interest. There's some things out on Facebook. Monica Graves is one of our sponsors, and she's been putting the word out. And, you know, we don't have a number, we're not charging, this is free and open to the public, so we don't know, but we're thinking that we'll have up to 300 people. That's what we're going to plan for.
Good.
The one thing that I do want to mention is food vendors. If it is a nice evening, it's important to the committee that I'm working with that sense alcohol will be served, that there'll be food vendors. We had originally said that we would go to the Imperial. I think that we're going to go to some local churches in the community and see if they're interested, if we can get one or two food vendors, so that there's hot dogs, hamburgers, that sort of thing.
Where would they get power?
This, hmm?
Where would they get power from?
Well, the one.
They use gas, most of them.
The one group, well, that's, that's something else that I was thinking of too, is, but the, the one group that we might ask actually has a truck. They come in a truck. So they have refrigeration and everything.
Our, our only requirement there is there's so much, like with the Optimus Downtown, there's so much grease that's, that spills out that they're all, they all have kitty litter or whatever to go down. If you cook a different way, that's fine, but most of the time it's fish fries or clam strips or french fries or whatever, so.
And that was something that we had a very long discussion on earlier this evening is, you know, the grease and the cleanup and who wants to leave this.
All the church groups, no, but this, because, and we're always ready for the Tea Party, but I don't think we'd be as ready to clean up the next day or that evening with this. It goes late, it'd be Sunday morning, and so that's something that, that I think your vendors are going to need to clean up after themselves.
Which is what we were going to explain to them, yes. That was going to be something that they needed to be, you know, cleaned up and out of there by 11 o'clock, correct? Is that?
Well, chief, with the noise ordinance, I, I think the vendors, you might, I don't know.
Yeah, a little earlier.
I think they might depart earlier. If you're just dancing at the end, I don't know. Chief, what about the noise ordinance?
10 is the noise order?
Seven to 10.
Okay.
Yep, that's fine.
But I think.
We need a motion to approve the permit.
I make a motion to approve the permit for the Historic Society of Kent County to have their Legacy Day and Block Party on August 16th, 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the first year. I will be in touch closely.
We'll get at least 300 people. Get 3,000 people.
I'll call you tomorrow, Karen, for the permit.
Okay, that brings us to the town manager's report. Mr. Bill Endersall.
Okay, well, we still have Pat here, and in case there are any other questions, we've had two workshops and a public hearing on ordinance 3-2014, budget for 2014-15, FY14. Or is it FY15, I guess?
FY15.
So any more questions from the council before anybody would enact it or move to enact it?
I move we enact the budget ordinance.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I do have this sheet for signage. Here it is.
And following, and following closely on the heels of that, the ordinance 4-2014, water and sewer ordinance revision, the 8% increase in the water and sewer bills, starting July 1st.
I can move everything.
You could be, Marty's not here. You could be the mover.
He's usually the go-to guy.
I'll be the mover.
And who's the shaker?
I move we adopt the ordinance 42014, the water and sewer ordinance revision.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed to the 8% increase.
Okay.
So. So it passed with 3 to 1?
3 to 1.
How'd you vote?
I voted in favor.
Okay. Okay, next, MVA schedule. I don't know if they're, the.
It's in there. Here.
The MVA schedule stops in Chester Town, 7:14. I never can read this. 7:14 and 15.
Mm-hmm.
Page 11 and 12. September 15 and 16. In October, it's only here one day on the 14th. November is here on the 17th and 18th, and December here on the 15th and 16th. It's still the most popular, second most popular one in the state. And so many people call me the day after it's here and say, when does the bus come here? I go, next month.
Why is it our business?
It's on our website. We give it to the papers and the spy, so don't miss it if you're, and don't put it off because renew now. The solar RFP went out on schedule last Thursday. It's been sent to the 11 bidders who bid last year, been put in the Kent News, and will go on email and marketplace.
And the deadline?
Deadline is July 18th. There's, the way that it goes is there's a pre-construction or a pre-bid meeting and questions and answers about a month from now to make sure everybody's clear on it. And Jim, the set, thank you for the article that you sent me and the televised thing. Anybody interested in it is some, some area problems with solar as, as it relates to dealing with the existing power company. Very interesting. It's, it's one of those things that, it's a hurdle to be hurdled. The website RFP, I would say, was a crashing success. We had two council people here on Friday opening the bids. We had, and believe me, these bids are thick documents. We had 20, 21 submittals.
Wow.
All of them very interesting and varying as much as, we had one to bid to, for $87,000 to redo the, the website. And I think the, the low bid for redoing the, redoing it initially was in the $7,500 range. There's still some tabulation to be done. I don't think the council could be ready to say one way or another, but wouldn't you say that they were well-done and interesting and that there's?
The only thing I was disappointed in, like I said when we opened the bids, that we didn't get a disc. They were all paper.
It was a lot of paper.
Yeah.
I will say though, I was able to kind of call out some of the bids that are either too expensive or the firms just seemed, or at least judging by their presentation, seemed too inexperienced. So of course that $84,000 one, that was cut immediately. And pretty much any bid, since the average typically fell between about 16 and about 30,000, anything above 30,000 is pretty much just.
They're only at 20 in the budget.
There are a couple that, one came in at 8,950, but again, just judging by his presentation, he seemed very inexperienced. So what I've done is, we now have a working list of 10 that we can kind of sort through and, you know, pick and choose the best options. We can either color down a little bit further, or we can just use that pool of 10 and then make the ultimate decision. But if we want to use distance as another means to kind of, you know, reduce the pool a little bit, there are a couple of firms that are based in California, a couple in the Midwest as well. So if you want a firm that is pretty close to home, distance could be the next criteria that we use to kind of make this a little bit more manageable.
If, if there are firms on the list that are local or relatively local, I mean, we want a flavor of, of our community on the website, and I can't see how firms in California can provide that. Do we have local firms on the shortlist that came in at a reasonable price range?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We point out we only have $20,000 in the budget, which is just a ton for this.
It doesn't get any more local than Mood Productions right out of Wharton.
Great.
So that is by far the closest bidder, but we do have a couple in Pennsylvania, one in New Jersey as well, and if I'm not mistaken, one in the DC metro area also, so.
Those are all on your shortlist. Great.
So I mean, I can then go ahead, go ahead and cut out the ones in California, and then that will reduce our list by, I think, two or three.
Well, did the RFP specify distance?
RFP did not specify.
Well, it does, it does talk a little bit about in one section, but it doesn't exclude anybody.
We would prefer somebody who.
Familiar with it.
But it didn't specifically say we are only looking for relatively local bidders.
So can you send an email of the ones that are in the top 10? And.
Did everybody get a copy of this?
No, because you hadn't read them, but Sam needed something to work from, so only the two of you got it.
We do have a semi-tabulation, which you're welcome to have. Some of the, some of them, it was hard to find, like, the maintenance fee or, or there was not a maintenance, an annual maintenance fee after redoing the thing mentioned. So we'll give you this, just understand that it's not the final tabulation, it's just the initial opening.
And, and then on the, on the final, or, you know, the ones that have made the cut, can you also put website samples in that too?
Okay.
So, I mean, I tried to write down all of it.
Absolutely. The next round is, is going to be much more intensive in terms of how I kind of break down the firms and compare and contrast, so.
So that we can look at examples.
Definitely add that in, for sure.
So one of the things we could do is, is Google the companies on the list, and their company websites are for sure going to highlight.
Yeah.
Some of their, you know, of course, they'll be the best projects that they picked, but I mean, that's what I would do as a first step.
Right. And some of the, the ones that I did cut off, their bids are reasonable, but judging by the websites that they highlighted, if that's their best, then they're simply just not up to the task. So, so a couple of those, like Tom's River Web Design, Gov Office Web Solutions, their bids are extremely low, but the websites that they really highlighted, they just.
They're probably pretty formulaic.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
We've already got that.
So what, what should our next steps be? And what's the timeline when we can pick the winner?
It's really going to come down to, I guess, breaking these companies or these firms down into a little bit more detail and kind of picking and choosing which ones simply just meet our profile the most. Some of these companies that are remaining, they mention social media directly in their RFP, others did not, others said it would be an additional expense. So just judging by some of the main criteria that we have, like making sure that it's accessible on a tablet or a mobile device, social media integration, those are some, some things that we can really use to differentiate between the remaining firms.
Okay. And then, would you and Bill want to then give us a recommendation on like the top three to five?
Sure.
So he's going to, we're going to continue with the tabulation and try to make sure that, and I think we should do it with all, and then, and then get the council to say you're down to 10 or whatever. But, but they do, it does look like there's definitely something there, and, and whoever else is interested, less than three, you know, could, could help.
Do you think you could have the tabulation by our next meeting?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Okay.
But I'd also, I mean, I wrote them down, I wrote the websites down that they already service, but I, I think all of us should have an opportunity in the top 10 to actually look at the websites that we do.
And we have three, we have three, I think, three sets of each, of each bid, so if anybody wants to sit down and look at the actual bids, before, during, or after the tabulation, you're welcome to. It's really kind of complex, but it's also fascinating.
This is very interesting. This is helpful.
I do want to ask, just for clarification, are you all okay for me to really focus on the 10 companies that I saw that fit our needs the most? Or do you want me to tabulate all 21 companies?
You're answering an RFP.
I think we need to be uniform, even if it means asking staff here to, to try to fill out the tabulation, just tell us what you want done. Even if somebody is 10 times higher than anyone else, you know, you can eliminate them based on that, but you want to do it as a group. And you want that tabulation to say why.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll help. Like I say, it's kind of interesting. We just can't spend $87,000 to redo. It's not in the budget.
So these are not in any order? These are.
No, they're not.
They're not even alphabetical, so.
Yeah, it says they were open.
Okay.
All right.
If you want to do a sheet, an outline, I can one by one go through. I, I don't know when you want to reward by, but as time permits.
Yep. We'll, we'll figure out a tabulation.
Okay.
Okay, a couple of other things. Linda asked for an amendment to add, add when, when there's noise or, and we weren't really 100% straight on which ordinance. We thought you might be talking about the noise ordinance or the chronic nuisance ordinance. I, we didn't know what.
The both of them have a first-time fine of 500 and a second time of 1,000 and third time.
The noise was five.
Noise was the one that, that was made into five. So we, we roughed out the changes to the noise ordinance that would, that added if the violation occurs at, at a rental property, the owner of the property will also be automatically fined $500 for the first violation, $1,000 for the second violation. But couldn't go any farther till I was certain that that's the ordinance that you meant. Because the other thing that this triggers, when, when there's constant violations of yard and noise and even crime, it's, it's our chronic nuisance ordinance.
They both have the same penalties?
I don't think so. Our general municipal infraction penalty is $100, but this is.
No, it's this one, no.
If this is 500, it may be a misdemeanor.
That was.
Now, this says municipal infraction, and I, you know, the other problem I have with this is that our municipal infractions in our charter says $100 for the first violation and 200 for the second. So how do we get, how do we get to $500? That was Edler's recommendation a few years ago, I think.
Yeah, that, I mean, I took that, I think it was from 2009 was when it was actually done.
I'd like to take this to Stuart and just check with him and bring, and then bring it back to you on the 16th. Because I understand exactly what you're trying to do.
Could I say something on this issue? It seems to me if the first time, I, I agree with the general principle of making a landlord responsible, but if the first time a landlord finds out that there's a problem with noise on the property, he's, he or she is stuck with a $500 fine, I'd like to see us skip
on the property, he's, he or she is stuck with a $500 fine, I'd like to see us skip the fine on the landlord for the first offense and then make them pay the 1,000 on the second fine, match the second fine, but give them a chance to, you know, really lay it on the line with the tenants, that they've got to clean up their act.
It should be in their lease.
Well, you're right.
We can find out from Stuart.
But if the landlord doesn't know that there's a problem.
You know, we may find out from Stuart whether we can actually do this, like a third-party arrest or not. There may be some sort of notification involved.
And then also, residents in my ward would like to see the violations in the newspaper, that they're actually being issued.
Do municipal infractions go in the paper, Chief? Or, actually, I should probably ask Trish, do...
The noise one goes, I'm not aware of, you know, littering, but I'm not aware of what general nuisance one or anything like that.
Well, okay. Well, if one kind of municipal infraction goes, then I would say another could.
Well, the residents in my ward that, and what's pushed everything over the edge is the property damage.
Right.
You know, not to the resident, the residents that the people are living in, but neighbors. And then they also said they would like to see that there is something being done by being listed in the newspaper.
Okay.
It's fair enough.
Well, let's check the legality of the changes you'd like to see, and then we can make more informed decisions.
And I'll check the chronic nuisance. Try to plug the same language in and take it to Stuart and say, can we do this? The last thing I had on here, and I guess Merrill'll segue into our charrette. The, I discussed in the budget that the change in the marina, how it's gone from a corporation, a contract with a corporation, to us hiring individuals to run it on a temporary basis. So we've been through that, but some people weren't aware of that, so we're aware of it now.
All right. Is that it?
That's my report.
My report's going to be pretty brief. We had a very successful charrette last Wednesday, May 28th. How many people were there?
I think that there were a little bit over 100. I didn't do an actual count.
I was going to say, over 100 people came. Basically, if you weren't there, I gave a pretty long PowerPoint with a lot of photographs showing the challenges that we faced rehabilitating that property. And then after the PowerPoint, we broke into small working groups to discuss various elements of the marina, including docks, bulkheads, the boat ramp and parking, boat storage, and the travel lift, and pedestrian amenities to the property and potential greening initiatives. And, you know, a lot of people actually left after the PowerPoint, but about half of the folks stayed and were very interested in playing a role and giving us their input. And so what I've done is basically created some bullet points where I felt we had general consensus on certain issues, and we're going to be meeting with the folks from McCrone this Thursday and giving them sort of our bulleted list of what we felt came out of that, and then they're going to take their first stab at a concept plan. And once the concept plan is created, we will post that both on our website and have a copy here in the lobby, and let that sort of get out to the public for consumption for a couple of weeks, and then have an additional public hearing where people can then come give us additional feedback on the concept plan. And then at that point, the mayor and council are just going to need to make the tough decisions that need to be made on the ultimate design. And once that's established, we just need to go and start raising the money that we need to raise, because it's going to be, it's ambitious, and there's a lot to be done. So that's how the process is going to work. My only other order of business is unfortunately, we received a letter of resignation from Ted Marissa Wolf from the Historic District Commission. He has been a professor at Washington College for the last 6 months and took a position down at Colonial Williamsburg, and they will be departing at the end of June. So his resignation will be effective June 5th, so we will need to advertise for resumes for his replacement.
All right, that brings us to ward reports. Why don't we start with Ward 1, Liz Gross?
I have nothing specific from Ward 1. I've had more than one resident in Ward 1 compliment us once again on the repairs of the potholes and how well it was done, but we've already had that at a couple of meetings. On a general thing, I would like to say that the music festival is in full swing and is going great guns. I was at the meet and greet party up at KNO Services this evening. There must have been 300 people there. I don't know. I mean, potluck. I mean, there's a lot of potluck. I made 170 ounces of baked beans and they were gone in like 20 minutes.
There's a turkey net somewhere.
It's like a huge pothole. But, you know, I would encourage people to, you know, pick out some of the more fun events that they schedule and check it out. I think you're coming to...
I'm coming tomorrow.
...concert at the Garfield to be publicly thanked for the support from the town. I'm glad that's happening.
All right, Linda, Ward 2.
Okay. I think the Tea Party was probably one of the best that we've had.
Yeah, I agree.
And actually, I think the weather has a lot to do with that, too.
Yes, it always does.
But, and I, like I said, I'm next door to Sabine in the farmer's market now every Saturday, and I asked her if she would come to a meeting to do like a wrap-up. This was her first year, and I told her I think she did a phenomenal job. The farmer's market was also on High Street, and I got the word from everybody in the farmer's market that they loved it, they did well, and the artisans were on Cannon. And it was, you know, the people were further up High Street, and I think it just, you know, made people go all over town.
The artisans were on Cannon? You mean Cross?
300.
Cross, I'm sorry, Cross. The artisans were on Cross. But it was just an absolutely beautiful day, and I told Sabine, for her first year, I thought she did a phenomenal job and everybody else who had a hand in putting all that together. And the Battle of Cox Field will be August 31st, and I even talked to a priest Saturday morning and asked him to pray every day from now until August 31st to have a day like we had at the Tea Party, but I don't think it's going to happen. Oh, my gosh.
Wrong month.
Oh, man. So anyway, I have a table at the Tea Bar at the farmer's market every Saturday morning for the Battle of Cox Field, and want to stop by and get schedules. And then the DCA is planning everything for Saturday. And then our Maryland Municipal League Convention starts Sunday through Wednesday, so going down the ocean.
Yep. All right, Sam, Ward 3.
During the Calvert Street delegation, one resident mentioned a career fair, and I think that's a very, very good idea, a career fair with all the local businesses who are posting and seeking, you know, staffers for their jobs. And he mentioned that everything is shifting online, and there are still residents who, you know, may not have access to the internet or reliable access to the internet. And, you know, doing something, not necessarily the old-fashioned way, but doing it in the more traditional way of, you know, people coming, meeting their employer, shaking their hands, dropping off a resume, you know, I think that it certainly goes a long way. And I think it will be a unique opportunity to get our residents out and get these jobs filled. Some of these positions have been open for quite some time. So you flip through the Kent County News and you see the employment section, it's the same thing over and over. And it doesn't have to just be the traditional jobs that we have and the fast food, Dixon, some of our regular stores, but it could also be people who are, you know, they have a particular trade or skill, and they're looking for people to, of course, hire them. So I think that's a very unique idea, and I think the town can find some way to kind of, you know, get that started.
So would we be putting on the career fair and like organizing who comes?
Maybe getting a couple of cosponsors, finding a location, and then, you know, all the people who are advertising on the Kent County News maybe find some way to forward that information to them, say, you can advertise in the newspaper or, or and, you can set up like a booth or a table at a career fair on this day upstairs.
Or the fire hall. I mean, I don't know how big a thing this would be, but if it's really big.
Yeah, booth.
Doesn't Chesapeake College have one?
I was thinking something more local, so you're in Chestertown.
Okay. Or invite them.
Chesapeake College.
We're not necessarily looking at college and trade jobs, right?
No, not particularly. And I mean, we're also, and some people don't have vehicles, so Chesapeake College is quite a distance.
No, but I, well, I was going to suggest maybe inviting them to come here for the job fair. That would work.
So anything to, you know, get some of these positions filled? It's certainly a win-win, so just wanted to bring that up, because I thought it was a fantastic idea.
And are we following through on the commitments on the speed bumps?
Absolutely. Speed bumps, I already have some preliminary estimates, which we're trying to sharpen up a little bit. The signs we do have, the sweeper was up there that, hopefully, that Thursday. I forget what the fourth one is, but yes.
Well, are you organizing another meeting with that group of people?
Yes.
And when and where will that be?
I was actually just talking with Chief Baker about that. We are, the first meeting that was proposed looks like it's going to be only the residents of Calvert Street and the...
Yeah, I jumped in if I may.
Please.
We actually had preliminary plans prior to the last town meeting, and that was with Calvert Heights Apartments specifically. The manager there has arranged a meeting, and that'll be next Wednesday. And I don't know what that date is right off the hand. At 6 o'clock next Wednesday for residents and tenants. But I think it's probably important enough that we expand that to the surrounding community, and we're working that out right now. It might, if we decide so, it might be reasonable just to do that in an hour later, the same evening at a different location.
The 11th.
So we could potentially piggyback off that event or just have our own event. But, I mean, that meeting is absolutely imminent, and it will happen very soon.
Will you keep us informed?
Absolutely.
I mean, would you like the rest of council to be there?
Most specifically Chris. I already let him know that they specifically wanted to have Chris, especially in his position as the mayor, at that meeting, so... But of course, the rest of the council is more than welcome.
The date is June 11th.
June 11th.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Ward 4 is doing great. So good, we don't have anything to say.
Colorado.
It's gone.
So the last item is request from the public to be on the agenda is Kevin Kerr here this evening.
Not again. How many times has he get to be here?
We've given him two chances. Trish Brooks.
And she's not here either. She stopped in today and was not feeling well, so she didn't know if she would be here or not.
Just flying through the agenda. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Yes?
Would it be possible for your bullet points that go to McCrone and your PowerPoint to go on the county website?
The PowerPoint, possibly. It's a big file. It's a 55 meg file, because I used so many photographs, and even after I shrunk them down, there were just so many that, I don't know. Sam suggested doing the Dropbox.
FTP site?
Yeah, that would only be for internal use, though, so I don't think people could access it.
So I don't know how that would work. Is it possible to put it on if it's that big?
I'll ask the webmaster tomorrow.
It should be fine.
It may have to be delivered in a different way than other sending, but why not?
But the bullet points...
And the bullet points, I can just put on a Word spreadsheet, a Word document, so that should be easy.
Can you wait on that? I'll have to talk to you about them.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
I'll be home before my children are up there. I can't believe it.